Patient to order on June 5th, 2025. In compliance with Chapter 231, Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper and on the district website on January 8th, 2025. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on May 28th, 2025: The Daily Record, The Star-Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany Patch, and the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per bylaw 168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and on our Video on the Go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please. Mrs. Abraham? Here. Mr. Barrios?
Here.
Mr. Vazada?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Dr. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Chapa?
Here.
Mrs. Pogan?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our student committee reports. Ms. Gonzalez?
Good evening. I'm Emma Gonzalez from Parsippany High School, and I'm so excited to share this week's past events with you. With summer coming up, our school is preparing for our finals. With final review and projects starting, all of PHS is ready for summer. For our PHS Student Council, we had the opportunity to attend the State Spring Student Council Seminar at Six Flags, where we were able to enjoy the day and all of the amazing rides. We are so grateful for this opportunity. On June 2nd, our seniors had their trip to Jony Park in Pennsylvania. They all had so much fun. On June 3rd, our band had their solo and small ensembles concert, where all of our hardworking peers were able to showcase their talents to everyone. Additionally, our Trienn Music Honor Society had their graduation court ceremony. On June 4th, our school had senior awards night, where all of our seniors can be acknowledged for all of the accomplishments they have had throughout the school year. Their impressive work can be appreciated through awards and scholarships, and we are all so proud of them. Today is Senior Prom. We hope that all of our seniors have an amazing night. Just a reminder for parents and students that June 11th is the Parent Booster Club Meeting at 7:00 PM in the Media Center. Information on upcoming events and practices alongside new decisions, such as a fee for clubs and sports, will be discussed. Additionally, on June 11th, there will be a Share the Keys Meeting for 11th graders and their parents to discuss safety and rules in place with new drivers. There are two other meeting dates for the Share the Keys Meeting. Dates are as followed: Wednesday, June 11th at 6:00 PM in the PHS Auditorium; Wednesday, June 18th at 6:00 PM in the PHS Auditorium; Wednesday, August 7th, 10:00 AM at the Parsippany Hills High School. A reminder that students that have attended either the June 11th or the June 18th meeting are eligible to purchase their senior parking lot tickets on Thursday, June 19th. Just a reminder that finals are on the 13th of June and then from the 16th to the 18th. Our Class of 2025 graduation is on the 20th of June. We are so proud of all of our seniors, and we cannot wait to see how far they're going to continue to go. Seniors, don't forget that you must return all materials and pay all fines before receiving your two tickets to graduation. These tickets will not be necessary to use during the outside ceremony. A reminder for all seniors that they cannot bring air horns, inflatables, cell phones, large bags or purses, bulky keys, or sunglasses to the graduation ceremony. Make sure to pay attention to your emails. For 9th, 10th, and 11th graders, make sure to take a look at the posted summer assignments to ensure that you understand all of the assignments prior to next summer, to this summer. If you have any questions, make sure to ask your teachers beforehand. Just a final reminder that with any Hall of Fame nominations, they should be submitted to Parsippany High School by August 31st, 2025. With the upcoming school year coming to a close, it is important for students to attend all fall sports meetings and take a look at upcoming sports practices. Thank you so much.
Thank you. PHHS?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zed Mohammed, and I'm a freshman at Parsippany Hills High School. Let's get started with this month's Viking Report, starting with some student council updates. The student council is still currently conducting next year's election for the student council executive board and class office. Campaign videos for all executive board and Board of Education liaison candidates have been uploaded to our official Instagram page. The campaign videos for all candidates, including class office candidates, have been emailed to every student in our school. Voting will begin on Monday, June 9th from 7:30 AM and will close on, at 2:30 PM. This will be done through a released Google form. Moving on to Parsippany Hills High School events and updates, here are some highlights from certain events and initiatives happening throughout Parsippany Hills High School. On June 4th, Parsippany Hills hosted lovely performances by the jazz band, brass ensemble, saxophone ensemble, shabbal choir, clarinet ensemble, chamber choir, and the flute ensemble. Each player showed great talent and musicality in this event and made Parsippany Hills proud. Graduation will be held on Friday, June 20th at 9:30 AM at the Parsippany Hills Turf Field. Each graduate will receive four white tickets if the ceremony is hosted outside and two blue tickets in case of an indoor ceremony. All six tickets are valid if the ceremony is held outdoors. We are excited to celebrate the Class of 2025. Come support the PHHS players at their spring cabaret on June 10th at 6:30 PM in the Parsippany Hills Cafeteria. The drama club will perform songs from their dream roles, and mission includes water and snacks. The Parsippany Hills chapter of Mu Alpha Theta, the National Math Honor Society, inducted nine new members and recognized eight graduating seniors with honor cords on May 20th. Inductees have demonstrated excellence in mathematics and community service through tutoring and competitions. The Valerie Fund's annual walk and 5K run will take place on June 7th at Verona Park in Essex County. Come out to support children fighting cancer and blood disorders and help ignite hope. Visit the valeriefund.org/walk to register. Open Campus is expected to return for the 2025-2026 school year, allowing seniors to leave campus during unit lunch. To be eligible for Open Campus and Senior Parking, students and a parent/guardian must attend one of the following required information sessions. The following information sessions are session on June 11th at 6:00 PM at the Parsippany High School Auditorium; June 18th at 6:00 PM at the Parsippany High School Auditorium; August 4th at 11:00 AM at the Parsippany Hills High School Auditorium; and attendance by a parent or guardian is mandatory at one of these meetings. Relatives like siblings or neighbors will not count. Senior Prom will be held today at 5:00 PM at the Brookley Club. It will be a fun and enjoyable event for all. Beautiful bouquets and custom class t-shirts featuring all graduates' names will be available at the Parsippany Hills High School commencement on June 20th. Attendees can preorder these items to ensure convenient onsite pickup during the event. Orders can be placed online at thecommencementgroup.com/parsippanyhills. Buffalo Wild Wings will host a fundraiser for Parsippany Hills High School PTSA on Tuesday, June 10th from 11:00 AM till closing time. Twenty percent of your total bill excluding tax, gratuity, and discounts will be donated when you show the flyer at checkout. The event will take place at 1540 US 46 in Parsippany. For inquiries, call 973-588-5501. Parsippany Hills High School Athletics Updates. Everyone who wants to stay updated on Viking sports scores, achievements, and events should follow the Parsippany Hills Sports Instagram page. The ad for this Instagram page is @parshillssport. Currently, there are no upcoming Viking games for the rest of this school year. And that is this month's Parsippany Hills High School Report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, are there any questions for our students? Thank you very much, students. Okay, at this time, I'm going to suspend tonight's regular agenda to allow for the presentation of the staff awards. Thank you all for coming tonight. This is obviously a very big deal for our Teachers of the Year and, you know, all the other awards we're giving out, and so the board absolutely extends its appreciation for all of your hard work, and congratulations on your honors. Dr. Sutter, would you?
I agree with Ms. Pogan. Thank you very much for coming out. This is actually one of my favorite board meetings of the year to see everybody come here and the awards that they're getting. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mulrooney. Dr. Mulrooney?
Thank you for controlling your applause there. You're very restrained. That was just more to be funny. I didn't need anything funny, but I want to echo Dr. Sutter's sentiments. This is the best board meeting of the year to celebrate our teachers. We've got the best teachers in the world, and I get to observe all the third-year teachers in every building, and you guys just do an amazing job. And to pop in all these classrooms and to see all the great things you do is just really, really fun and so affirming about the work we do and the future for our kids. So congratulations to all of the teachers of the year. When that list came out, every year I always look at the list, and I'm like, man, they nailed it again, right? It's got 14 more incredible selections. I want to congratulate all the retirees, and know that I say that with a twinge of jealousy in my heart, all right? So you're going to a better place. And I want to congratulate all the 25-year teachers for, you know, sticking it out, not getting fired, all the good stuff, right? You did it, and he was hoping we'd add some more years to that list, so. There are several celebrations happening in the district: proms, retirement parties, et cetera. So there are several people who can attend. I'll announce their name anyway, but I'll just say not in attendance, but otherwise, I'll bring everybody up here, and it's going to be awesome, and we're going to recognize all their amazing contributions, so. There is a video that will be posted on the district's website and Video on the Go's YouTube channel. We'll send that link out to all the teachers tomorrow, Tony's going to send that. Teachers, you've got enough emails from me lately. Do you all agree? I think, I think so. All right, so without any further ado, these are the retirees, the 2025 retirees. Oh, isn't Joni Benner the best? Because Joni, when you feel excited, you're like, you're like feeling it, and you think you're like doing a great job, Joni reminds you that you skipped two important people off to come up and talk, so. Natalie, guys, please go up. You're continually representing APSA to offer some congratulations. Thanks, Joni.
Good evening. On behalf of APSA, I would like to congratulate and thank all of our Teacher of the Year recipients, 25-year recipients, and our retirees this evening. A huge thank you to your commitment and service to all the students in our Parsippany community. You have made many sacrifices, oftentimes placing your Parsippany family first with planning, prepping, cleaning, grading, budgeting, and simply listening to and supporting the needs of students and colleagues through life's triumphs and challenges. Each one of you in the myriad of titles and positions represented here this evening have made a difference in the lives of each child to make Parsippany a wonderful place to raise children and provide an excellent education. As a result, many of you have also chosen to raise your own families here in Parsippany. So thank you for the hard work and oftentimes quiet, humble leadership. On a personal note, I have had the opportunity to collaborate and lead with many of you, and in some cases, you may even be a former student. I and other APSA members have the privilege to know as young children and now as fine educators and parents. To our retirees, many educators ponder the question, how do you know it's time to retire? A frequent response by its unknown author is simply, it's when you stop lying about your age and start bragging about it. Well, to join that 55-and-plus retirement club deserves a wonderful shout-out, probably from the highest of hilltops, for your service in one of the most challenging yet rewarding careers, not measured by large financial bonuses, but simply by student growth socially, emotionally, academically, and also measured by students' gratitude, often heartfelt with a huge hug or handshake, a verbal thank you, a card, a piece of artwork, a return visit or email, or picture to remember them by. Yes, in the words shared by Salma Adam, "A leader's truest success is the growth of those they lead." Your retirement is evidence of your triumph. Each of you has helped shape our future, encouraging confident, reflective learners and supporting our educators through new curriculums, technology enhancements, and the beginnings of the newest platform, AI. On behalf of APSA, a special thank you to Dr. Sutter for his leadership throughout close to the last decade. It has been a pleasure working with you, and we appreciate all of your support and sacrifices you have made to help Parsippany continue to grow. To our APSA President, Mr. Jeff Martens, thank you for your servant leadership in so many roles in APSA and your commitment to the students, parents, staff, and administrators in Parsippany. To all of our retirees this evening, in the words of The American Children's Author, Illustrator, Animator, and Cartoonist, Dr. Seuss, "Don't cry because it's over, smile because it happened." We will miss you and thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Now I'd like to call Lindsey Wyman, PHA Vice President, to offer her congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Parsippany Hills Education Association, it is my great honor and privilege to welcome you this evening of celebration. A night where we recognize excellence, dedication, and a shared commitment to education that binds us all together. Tonight, we gather to honor our Teachers of the Year, extraordinary educators whose passion, creativity, and tireless efforts have made a lasting difference in the lives of their students and the culture of our schools. Your commitment to excellence in education inspires us all. You remind us that teaching is not just a job, it's a mission fueled by heart, courage, and belief in the potential of every child. Congratulations on this well-earned recognition. We celebrate those with 25 years of service. Your tenacity is unmatched, and dedication to our profession extraordinarily admirable. We also pay tribute to our retirees who are closing an incredible chapter through professional lives. Your impact reaches far beyond your classroom walls. It lives on in the lessons you've taught, the values you've instilled, and the lives you've helped shape. We thank you for your service, dedication, and your immeasurable contributions. May this next chapter bring you rest, joy, and new adventures. We celebrate those with 25 years of service. Did I say that right? We, we celebrate you again. A special recognition is also due tonight as we extend our heartfelt congratulations to Dr. Sutter on his retirement. Best wishes, your leadership has guided our district through both challenges and triumphs. On behalf of the PHA, we wish you nothing but the best in this next chapter of life. If you reflect on what it means to be an educator, the words of Aristotle remind us, educating the minds without educating the heart is no education at all. Each of you here tonight, through your compassion, dedication, and commitment, have educated both the minds and hearts of our students. That is the true measure of impact. To our honorees, our retirees, and our superintendent, thank you for your years of service, for your leadership, and for making a difference. Congratulations once again, and enjoy this well-deserved celebration.
Thank you, Lindsey. We'll have Board President Alison Pogan and Board Member Jack Ray and Matt DeVito join me to present the retiree awards.
Yes, and I forgot to say that after the awards, there will be cookies and punch in the cafeteria.
So for those in attendance, I'll call your name up. Please come up to receive your award and to have your picture taken. Let's go. And if you'd like to say something, the microphone is yours. Ten minute limit. Keep it moving. The board is proud to honor the careers of the following staff members who will be retiring. First up, Dave Almen.
I just want to thank my family, my wife, my three kids, for all your support throughout these years. It hasn't been easy. We've been through some ups and downs with everything that's happening, but I love you guys. I couldn't have done it without you, and I thank you for allowing me to do my job and for retiring and moving on to something else, so I love you guys, and thank you so much for coming tonight. Thank you.
Our next three retirees are not in attendance. Jeffrey Butterfield, Terry Calfiore, and Carol Caplinelli. Next up is Juan Castro. Susan Cure. Our next two retirees are not here. Kathleen Diedrich, Susan Engfer. Our next, Mary Fernando. David Glass.
Of course, to thank my family, but I also deserve... I want to thank the Parsippany School District and Board of Education. I've had a great 25-year career here at Parsippany, and you've allowed me to have a home, raise two children, and have a good life, and I will go on to a good life in retirement, but I wanted to say thank you. That means a lot, but thank you very much.
Kathy Grower. I apologize for the frustration. Valerie Greer. It's comfortable in the know. Just think, they'll feel it, sorry. Carolyn Malloy. Jeff Martin is not retired, not in attendance. Dan McTugle.
I just wanted to take a second and say that, you know, that the thing, I miss many aspects of not working anymore, but the thing I think I miss the most is the wonderful folks that I work with, the talented teachers, the staff, my supervisor, everybody that is involved in the district. I miss that a lot, and it's really good to be here tonight, so thank you very much.
Gabriel Navarre. Missy Almida. Marie Picamini. John Freehart. Beth Raff.
I am ending a 30-year career, most of which was spent Hillsborough Township, but I want to thank the Board of Ad and everyone in Parsippany Tri-Horse School District for giving me the opportunity to be the school librarian, best job in the whole school. Thank you so much.
Dawn Brizzo. Karen Snell. Our next two retirees are not in attendance. Kathleen Sullivan and Karen Timmerman. Sandra Voita. And our last retiree, Joseph Olgemuth, is not in attendance. I thank you to Mrs. Pogan, Mr. Ray, and Mr. DeVito. Please, I'd like to have Mr. Barrios, Mrs. Abraham, and Dr. Wright come on up. All right, the board is proud to honor the following staff members who have served the district for 25 years. First up is Lucille Alexander. Eric Berkowitz. Melissa Churchwell. Melissa Churchwell. Kathleen Diedrich, who is not in attendance. Damaris Doncado, who is in attendance. Deborah Delia. I immediately regret that upgrade comment. Moving right along, Gina Forward Verden. Allison France. Data Glass. Kathleen James. Jason Madan. Joey Pignagio. Donna O'Donnell. Lori Perry. Todd Ricker. Any more important, Ricker? Donna Ricker. That's 15 years of record, people. 15 years of record. Aleen Rabino. Joseph Steller. Nicholas Taci.
Thank you, and I really wanted to specifically say thank you to three people who are no longer in the district. Dr. Connie Donvito, Angelo, Juliana, and Tom Tobiasin, who were three people who basically hired me and gave me the chance to have an excellent 25, 26 years. Also, I would like to thank the community of Parsippany, because if it wasn't for the community, I wouldn't be here 25 and 26 years. And with that, I say the parents, the families, as well as my students. And also, I'd like to thank God for giving me the last 25, 26 years in a really great place. Thank you.
Stacy Vancic. Thank you, Mr. Barrios, Mrs. Abraham, and Dr. Wright, Mrs. Mayer, and Mr. Chappell. Mr. Chappell, please join us at the front. I'll give you a little background on the Teacher of the Year tradition in Parsippany. To honor our Teachers of the Year, we give each teacher a red plate. You can look at Joanie over there. She's modeling the red plate. She interned on The Price is Right back in the 80s. It was a time honored tradition among early American families that when someone deserved special praise or attention, they would serve dinner on the red plate. The red plate is a perfect way to acknowledge a staff member's special triumphs, to praise a job well done, to reward a goal achieved, or to simply say, "You are special today." The board is proud to honor the following staff members who were selected as Teacher of the Year for 2025. Without any further ado, from Brooklow Middle School, Elena Gerber. From Central Middle School, unable to attend tonight, Sandy Bimby. From Eastlake, Sue Greifer. From Intervale School, unable to attend tonight, Lorna Cropper. From Norwood, Danielle Sacon.
Sorry, I had to bring a paper. Good evening. It's truly an honor to be standing here this evening. And I'm lucky enough to say I've been at this podium before. Since then, I've gained some wisdom for this night. First, I realized to bring my own tissues. Should I finish the speech without needing them, it'll be shocking to everyone. Second, I realized, don't labor over your speech again. Don't stress because speaking in public is a challenge. Work smarter and have someone write it for you. I know what you're thinking. This is not AI-generated. I did not use ChatGPT to create it. Instead, I used by far the best resource, hands down, my students. They are amazing. They mean the world to me, and without them, this night would be insignificant. Now, keep in mind this year, I'm blessed to teach kindergarten, first, and second grade students. So here's what they helped me say. Number one, say the words, "Thank you for supporting me." To my family, my friends, thank you for supporting me in my career, whether it's cutting out my laminating, assembling booklets, sharpening pencils, collecting items for my treasure chest, it's all appreciated. Number two, say, "Thank you" to the whole Norwood staff. Mr. Lindzenbold and my whole Norwood family, I am so grateful for your support and kindness, so lucky to work with you each day. Also, I would like to say thank you, Dr. Sutter, and Board of Education members. Finally, one of my very sweet second grade students, she wanted to just completely write the whole thing for me. So here it is. She thought I was sharing this just with teachers, just so you know. Dear teachers, I'm doing this speech because I am so thankful that I am Teacher of the Year and so thankful for school and all of the teachers. Thank you all. To teachers and principal, love, Mrs. Sacon. With all that being said, they pretty much nailed it, right? So thank you again for this incredible honor and thank you, thank you, thank you to my students. You are simply the best.
We're going to take a quick break from the Teachers of the Year and recognize Jason McDonald, who's 25 years. Rush Dotting, who's 10 years old. The Lake High Math teacher of the year, Amanda Coppola.
Hi, everyone. This is my 14th year as a teacher. All of them at Lake High Math School, but my first in the BSI Accelerated Math role. I'm incredibly honored to receive this recognition. I just want to thank my husband, Nick, for pushing me to pursue roles outside of the classroom. I'm sorry, I didn't... My parents were supporting me always, but especially now as they help care for our three children, ages three and under, so that I can do this job. And mostly to my colleagues. You show up every day for your students, even in the face of limited resources, lack of funding, program cutting, changing of curriculum. Your commitment to your students is inspiring and I'm proud to be part of our team. Thank you.
From Parsippany, Jennifer Fisara.
A little shorter. Hello, everyone. I want to start by thanking the amazing administration, my fellow teachers, friends, and family for being here today. A huge shout out to my biggest cheerleaders, my husband and my two boys, CJ and Jimmy, who have been along for the ride every day, early mornings, late nights, and even weekend trips. You've been my MVPs. I could not be standing here if it were not for my wonderful colleagues, colleagues that support each other on the easy days and the chaotic days. We are Ohana, which is a Hawaiian term for family. That's from Stitch, guys. This award isn't just for me. It shines a spotlight on our awesome physical education program at Lake Parsippany. Thanks to our rock star principal, Mrs. Hoffman, supportive parents, and a whole lot of planning, our students get to run, jump, dance, and stay active through events like the Pumpkin Run, the Kid's Heart Challenge, and our always epic Field Day, which I did 28,000 steps, yes. Because yes, you can learn math and throw a ball in the same day. My students are my daily dose of motivation. Their energy is electric and their smiles keep me going. Their energy is electric and their smiles keep me going. I love saying hi to families in the morning, dancing in the hallways, and popping into classrooms just to spread a little joy. I even teach in a turkey costume, yes, I do, sometimes, why not? Positive energy spreads just as fast as lightning, so why not make it fun? When I was in third grade, I wrote about becoming a PE teacher, just like my dad and grandfather. But let's be real, it took a few detours. I tried speech pathology, nursing, even stage makeup. It wasn't just until I got to MSU, I decided not to leave PE. Class, gymnastics, golf, it was fun. Well, that's what I did. I still remember my very first lesson, a Star Wars-themed game with yarn balls flying everywhere, mats constantly getting knocked down, and my supervisor told me, "You're the most patient teacher I've ever seen." And I looked back and ran with it, building new programs, setting big goals, and having a class while doing it. Along the way, I've had the best mentors, Mr. Stefanelli, you guys don't know him, my fourth grade teacher, Ms. Myers, first grade teacher Bob Mayer, phys ed teacher Ms. Michelle, my high school softball teacher Emery Adele, my mentor for Montclair State, and Mr. Ardon from Milburn, who I played volleyball with and coached with, who is now my son's godfather. These amazing educators taught me that the heart of teaching isn't just in the lesson plans, it's in the relationships, the laughter, the support. So if you've ever had a teacher, mentor, or family member who've helped you dream bigger, stand taller, or just arrived Monday morning, just give some love, we all get here together. Thank you for letting me share this moment, let's keep spreading kindness, dancing in the halls, and reminding each other, positive energy always wins.
From Littleton, Michelle Lizia.
It looks like a lot of pages, but it's not, I just can't see as well as I used to. The font is very large. So this is a really nice feeling to be here tonight with so many others who still love teaching, who still pour themselves into their classrooms, who still come to school every day trying to be the best version of themselves for their students. And to have your colleagues be the one who recognizes you, well, that's an honor and I'm truly humbled. I am grateful for the inspiration that's come for me all around. I've gained endless ideas from colleagues that have turned into very good friends. Every teacher, paraprofessional, supervisor, and principal that I've had a pleasure to work alongside. I've learned to be a better teacher from being a parent and from talking with other parents of students, and of course, from my own students. I've tried to keep these tips and tricks and ideas with me, but also let them continue to transform me into the teacher that I still want to be. I think tonight it's important to acknowledge a special woman who I met back in 2000 when I just began my career. She was an amazing mentor, her name was Patty Danishak. She helped instill important teaching values in me because she herself was such a dedicated, fun teacher, straight through retirement. If you knew her, you will know that we will all forever think of her when we see a giraffe or where we wear the color purple. I also want to acknowledge my amazing support system, my family and my close friends. I'm very grateful to my mom and dad who listened to nine million teaching stories over dinner, especially when I lived with them in my twenties. I also want to give a special extra shout out to my awesome mom who has literally been coming to my classroom every single summer for the last 25 years to help me set up. The woman does it all, she moves furniture, she unpacks, she cleans, she organizes, she sets up everything with me, and I'm extremely grateful. Last, I want to thank my wonderful husband Steven, who listens to me with his heart, laughs out loud with me, gives great advice, and has 100% supported me through it all, including some challenging teaching transitions. He has also unknowingly shown our three daughters how to be very supportive. They have followed in my mom's footsteps and have come to my classroom every year since babies. I love seeing how much... Sorry, I think that seeing how much thought, effort, creativity, passion, and time we all put into our classrooms has taught my girls to view their own teachers in a whole new light. They've gained perspectives that many other children don't have. My daughters constantly inspire me to be a better teacher, the kind of teacher that I want them to have in school. A teacher who really wants to be there every day, to make learning fun, to show compassion, to support them when they need it, but enhance all their best qualities, and to make them want to come to school every day, and for that, I'm thankful. Nothing puts a smile on my face more than an old student stopping by my classroom to say hi or recognizing me outside in the world and wanting to catch up for a few minutes. The connection a teacher makes with their students is a beautiful thing, and I'm so happy that I've been part of this profession.
From Mount Tabor, Bonnie Crone. From Northville, Caitlin Walsh.
Dr. Sutter, Dr. Maroni, and members of the Board of Education, I would like to take this opportunity to sincerely thank you for having me here tonight. I feel so honored to be named Northville's Teacher of the Year. I truly love what I do, and I feel so lucky to spend my days helping to make a small difference in the lives of the children of Persipony. I would especially like to thank the principals that I had the opportunity to work for and learn from. Marlene Sumi at Mount Tabor, Jeff Martens for giving me my start in Persipony, and now, the little ones come on. And now Natalie Betts for your continued support and guidance. In recent weeks, it has become even clearer to me that I work with the most supportive and loving staff. Not only are the teachers and staff at Northville inspirational educators, but they have also become my extended family. I have had the privilege to work with and learn from some amazing people, and the list would be too long to read tonight, but please know that you have all made an important impact on me. I would be remiss if I didn't mention one teacher. My co-teacher and essentially my other half, Kim Myers. Kim and I started co-teaching together about five years ago, and I now cannot imagine my life without her. She has become my best friend and Aunt Kim to these boys. I am so thankful that this job has brought us together. I would also like to thank my family, my husband and my two boys Ben and Bobby, for always understanding when mama has to do some extra work because as they say, mama has to teach those kids. I also want to take a minute to thank my parents and brother for being my constant support system. Chris, thank you for always being my student when I used to make you play school growing up and for being the best uncle to my boys. My mom was so excited about tonight, and I know that she is here with me. Dad, you are the reason that I am standing up here tonight. Your passion for education has been something that I have witnessed my whole life. Thank you for always believing in me. Thank you, everyone.
Northville's not messing around, huh? From Persipony High, Jason Matthew Erda.
Hi, everyone. I asked my wife about 16 times what should I say tonight, and she said, "Jae, just go on." No one really wants to be out here and just thank everybody who stays here with us. And I am still in disbelief, to be honest with you, that I was the Teacher of the Year. I teach special education, my population in my classroom is separate kids. But I'm there 24/7 for my friends and the young teachers, the old teachers, anyone who wants to come and see me about anything. So this wasn't really a student thing, it was more of a peers thing. And I appreciate the people who are here tonight to celebrate this honor. And I don't, I still, it still doesn't hit me. Dr. Maroni knows me, I'm not very good with this kind of stuff in terms of accepting things because I always feel like it's you that deserve the honor. So I'm very thankful that I received this award. Dr. Sutter, congratulations, and thank you very much.
From Persipony Hills, Adam Paves.
I just said to my wife, "If Jay speaks, that means I'm gonna speak," so I'll be quick, I promise though. I know we're wrapping things up. I can, I hate being the center of attention, and like Jay just said, when I got nominated to be a teacher here at Park Hills, it truly was an honor. Ironically, 25 years ago, I got a letter from Dr. Perlett, who his auditorium was named after, from Montclair State, and in that letter was my student teaching assignment. And I opened it up, and it says, "Brooklawn Middle School," and I never heard of the place. And when I went there, when I talk about the most positive way to start my career, it really was the utopia of a building, it was phenomenal. Parker Henyon, he was my mentor, so he's the first person I want to thank. He talked about a professional, the kids loved him. And just like I said, everything about that building was great. I continued on, and I was a permanent sub over at the high. I'm not gonna bore you guys and go through my whole career, no, but the story's going somewhere. And sometime in the winter, as I was permanent sub, I ended up applying for a job at a middle school in Northville here, and I was a finalist. And I go on the interview, and me and the principal really hit it off. I could tell the guy loved me and the guy wanted me. The superintendent, though, chose the other guy, which is fine. Fast forward, I end up getting the job here. Connie Donvito reached out to me in June, and I ended up getting a three-foot position here at the Hills, and you know, the rest is history, but the reason why I was telling that story, I go to sign my contract with Dr. McGrath, and I asked him, and ironically Dave's here, which I didn't even realize that Dave's gonna be in the audience here. So I asked, "Is there gonna be any coaching positions at the Hills?" And low and behold, he's like, "You know what, the new athletic director's next door." So I go next door, and who is it? The principal that loved me, this guy Steve Nakara, he was the athletic director here. He gave me Dave's phone number, I called him, and then, as you remember, our little interview we had up on the field 24 years ago. So it's, I really believe in fate. I mean, everything I've had, all the experiences I've had here, it's just positive. Connie Donvito, I know Nick, you mentioned her as well, I wanted to thank her. She was, for those of you who didn't know her, she's like five foot one, 110 pounds soaking wet, and she was the most intimidating human being I've ever had in my classroom. But she taught me and really created the foundation for what I became. And then also the original lead teacher here, Rob Weinstein, he took me under his wing, and him and I taught together a class called Ipple for many years. It's really been great, there's too many people to thank, but I feel fortunate, I get to come to work, I love coming to work, and this district's really a great place to work, so thank you.
From Rockaway Meadow, Jason Trubisky.
I want to say thank you so much for this honor. I'm proud to accept it, not just for myself, but on behalf of teachers everywhere who are truly a different breed of human. It's true, we put our pants on one leg at a time, just like we fall simultaneously, diffusing a playground drama, printing out subplans, and eating a granola bar with no hands. Sure, if we're just regular people, you know, regular people who can tell when a kid is about to throw up purely based on facial color, who can survive on cold coffee and invisible bathroom breaks, and who can consider a functioning stapler a sign from the universe that today will be okay. They say those who can't do teach, to which I say, come into a classroom and try managing 20 tiny humans, all asking to go to the bathroom at the same time, while explaining fractions, while tying a shoelace with your foot. We do more before lunch than most people do. Teachers are just built different. We have superhuman bladder control, we have X-ray vision for cheating, and we have the reflexes of a ninja when someone says, "The principal's coming." This award is for not only me, but every teacher who's made learning magical, who celebrated a lost tooth like a national holiday, and who knows that the real measure of success is when a kid says, "This was the best day ever." So again, thank you so much for this honor, I'm truly humbled. I'm endlessly grateful for my amazingly supportive family whose love, encouragement, and belief in me make everything I do possible. And of course, I share my, I share this with my incredible colleagues at Rockaway Middle School, you heard from them earlier, because I wouldn't be here without their constant support, inspiration, and the way they show up for our students and each another, or at each other every single day. Thanks.
Is that the first giant head we had? And our last Teacher of the Year for 2025 will be Troy Hills, Lauren Burge. Okay, I hope, I don't, I feel like this is gonna sound so corny, but my heart is so full of love right now, it's just such a really nice thing. There's only one cure for a heart full of love, not a hug, bug juice and cookies. So the record goes along, guys, congratulations, all of you, you're wonderful. Thank you for listening to it.
Oh, too funny.
Okay, we're going to resume our public meeting. Is there any correspondence to come before the board?
No, there's not.
Is there any unfinished business with board members? All right, we are up to committee reports. Mrs. Abraham, do you have sports?
Thank you. I have a report on sports and co-curricular. Sports met on June third. Present were myself, Mr. Barrios, Ms. Mayor, Mr. Ricker, Ms. Benos, Mr. D Bernard and Mr. Huff, along with the PHS and PHHS boosters. We welcome the boosters and thank them for attending. Unfortunately, Mr. Bonzino, the female director, was unable to attend this evening and hope that we can have another time that he could attend. The eighties gave their updates. Mr. D Bernard gave a spring sports update from Parsippany High. And he spoke about baseball, girls lacrosse, golf, softball, tennis, track and unified track. And I'd be happy to go into any of that if you'd like. In addition to that, PHHS, Mr. Huff went into the spring sports updates from Par Hills and spoke about the recap from baseball as well as softball, golf, boys tennis, girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, unified track, boys track and field, girls track and field as well. And in addition to that, we had an update on open booster and coach positions. At PHS, we are still looking for an assistant coach for football and cheer. At PHHS, we're still looking for a head coach, combined girls basketball co-op and assistant field hockey, assistant girl soccer and assistant girls basketball and assistant boys basketball. We have an update regarding the girls basketball co-op. It was approved, so for next year, there will be one team. And they're currently looking for a head coach and hope they will have one to get approved for the next BOA meeting. After the coach is approved, we'll have a general meeting with the students and parents. There was a question that was asked about whether they'll have new uniforms. The answer was that probably not this year as it was not in the budget. They will wear their high colors when playing at the high and Hills colors when playing at the Hills. There was an additional question about whether the booster president at the high, if they have a booster president at the high, and it was said that we would give the info to the Hills boosters so they can combine their efforts. And when are the co-op successful continuation? That is at the end of the second year. In addition to that, the boosters asked how we can get volunteers and how do you get dues collected from parents? Some of the members said that they offer incentives like end of the year banquet for free and are entered for a scholarship if they have paid dues all four years. We had a discussion about the new annual fifty dollars for as many sports as you can play, as well as the athletic fee and then the twenty-five dollars for as many clubs as you can participate in. And Mr. Ricker said it was due to the budget, but the transportation costs and due to this fee, while modest, will help offset those fees. The boosters also wanted to know if the high school athletic director spoke to the middle school coaches about playing more students. And they said that they did. The sports night was a great success and the athletes liked making their table. They invited more middle school athletes for high school games. And for next year, they're working on middle school games before the high school games to garner more interest. In addition to all that, there was a question asked if we can bring back the Hills and high game that used to be on Thanksgiving. It does not have to be on Thanksgiving, but it could be any other day, but it would be a great spirit builder. And last but not least, the question was asked about scheduling games and trying not to conflict with the middle school games this year as some middle schoolers could not attend the mayor's cup due to their own games. And the athletic director said that they will take all schedules into consideration, but sometimes there are just not enough days. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Abraham? All right, Mr. Schaffo, I believe you have committee reports?
I do, thank you, Allison. Curriculum issues did meet on June third. Present were myself, Mrs. Abraham, Ms. Fel, Mrs. Benos. And I want to thank the board first and foremost for completing their board self-evaluation for 2025. Lot of great comments. I think the results reflect our collective strengths in all those areas where we can continue to grow as a governance team. The memo, this memo outlines a summary of our performance in six actionable, make that five, because we did remove one, five actionable steps to help us improve and serve the school community better. The committee spent at least two meetings and some email correspondence over about the past month looking at this. And for your consideration, are the five recommended goals or opportunities for improvement for the board? I think, well, no, I know the board has made great progress and will continue to do so. I'd ask you to review these five goals and send any questions you have to Mrs. Benos. She'll aggregate them to the committee and hopefully at the next board meeting on June eighteenth, we can agree to these goals for the next coming year. The second committee report that I have is for the ad hoc committee. That's the board committee that's considering and has been working with the township on revenue for pilot funding. I just want to take a moment and recap some history of how we got to where we are with an MOU or memorandum of understanding submitted to us by Mayor Barberio. The MOU has been posted online earlier this evening, so it's now a public document. It was late third quarter September, I think, when the concept of how to structure an agreement with the town first surfaced with the concept of a per pupil fee that would be calculated and that fee remitted to the district, the school district. And there were some discussions from that time through March about what that could look like conceptually. Because if you recall, there were a lot of discussions about how do we even receive funding from the town? Do we have them fund capital projects? Do we increase our shared services? Do we ask for a percentage of pilot funding? But conceptually, the per student charge seemed to make sense because it was quantifiable and it was needs-based. The MOU was sent to the board on April twenty-fourth and it was sent to the full board on May fifth. The board was able to provide questions that they had on the MOU and there were so many good questions and there are details that need to be ironed out. On May fourteenth, the ad hoc committee met with a special counsel to address the board member questions. And again, on May twenty-eighth, we sent a document request to the mayor for additional information as the board thought that was pertinent. Now, the mayor has proposed providing the school board three million dollars a year. Again, this is in our confidential memo. It was again posted online today. When we met with the attorney and the ad hoc committee, there were a lot of questions on funding, what pilot projects this MOU covered, et cetera. And we'll get those questions answered. But I do want to just suggest to the board that a financial agreement with the town that provides upwards of three million dollars fundamentally doubles the two percent tax levy that we receive every year through our tax levy. So we are approaching a month and a half point since the MOU was provided to the board. I would suggest that we really work with our outside special counsel, get our questions answered and get back to the township with a response ASAP. And that's my report.
And we do have that next meeting set up, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Schaffo? Okay, are there any, oh, sorry, Mr. Ray?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that because fifteen fifteen, which that is not included, and in that agreement, there's always going to be basically a two hundred, depending on the number of students that come in from that pilot project, there's going to be a two hundred student gap that we're not going to have any funding on, basically for the life of the pilot unless an ordinance is changed or established that does include that. And I found the mayor's statement at the, at the town council, it was a couple of town councils a few years ago, I found that, that, well, he didn't negotiate that. Well, it doesn't matter if he negotiated or not, we still have, you know, a lot of students coming into, into, into the district that are going to have to be educated and there's certainly a significant cost in doing that. But if we, it's not as a funding mechanism for the other pilots and we don't have fifteen fifty, basically we have a losing proposition for potentially thirty years.
Jack, I think that's a great point. And I think that's one of the things that we go back to the township with as far as our response to the MOU is, you know, would they consider including, was it the district at fifteen, fifteen is part of that memorandum of understanding? So we would not lose potentially revenue from those two hundred anticipated children.
So this is definitely an ongoing process. Yes. Anybody else? Okay, the only, let's just see, no other, oh, Mrs. Mayor, you had a liaison report.
I do, thank you. On May thirty-first, I attended the, a teacher appreciation day that we were invited to. It's called Guru Vandana. It's the teacher appreciation event. There are two chapters, the Parsippany, Morse Plains, Denville, Randolph, and both chapters had children from our district participating. So it was hard because I went to the one in Parsippany and then I booked up to the one in Randolph and we had a lot of teachers being recognized. The guru is, it's just interesting. The teacher is held in a very, very high esteem in the Hindu culture. And as a, as a result, they instill in these children the respect for teachers like none other. I mean, they, they were just, they, they, it was just wonderful because they, each, each child's invited a teacher and they spoke about the teacher, you know, how special that teacher was, what that teacher, you know, does or whatever. And it was just heartwarming to see because, you know, teachers can get awards from their, their, you know, for teacher of the year and stuff like that, and that's wonderful. But when you hear from a child that you did something to really, to change them or to make them feel loved or to make them feel accepted, that's the best. I can't think of anything better than that. Let's see, what they, there was something else that they did. Hold on. Come on, you suffer. Okay. So on the thirty-first, I went to the Randolph, the Parsippany one, and we had six teachers who were recommended, who were spoken about there was Jamie Vento at Troy Hills, Catherine Winnick at Central, Christina Appell at Central, Cindy Pinto, Lake Iwata, Norma Sudak at Brook Lawn and Sarah Wills at Brook Lawn. And it's interesting because I've been going to this for many years and I see Sarah Wills many times each year. She's there by a child inviting her. In Randolph, we had Alyssa Gibbons from Knollwood, Christine Hens from Rockaway Meadow, Cait Lee Lomanello from Rockaway Meadow. Man Yang was there as the strings teacher from Littleton. And they were, the kids was just overwhelmed with how great he was. You should have heard the child talking. Aaron Chambers from Tabor, Sarah Silver from Tabor, Beth Roth from Tabor. And she retired tonight and she said that that experience was one in a million. You can't, you can't ever repeat that. And Christine Braun was from Littleton. Not only did the kids share their thoughts about their teacher, but the dancing and the ceremony, you know, they put the, they marked their foreheads with the red dots. They presented them with things. Then they bowed down and they, you know, cleaned their feet. It was just beautiful. The dancing was incredible, that these little kids were doing this. It was phenomenal. So I urge anybody next year when we're invited, you know, it would be great to, if we could get more board members to go, I'm sure they would love to see us all there. They had great food. It was just a wonderful day. So it was a great experience.
Thank you. At the Chamber of Commerce meeting two weeks ago, there were at least six interns from the district working with local businesses. I did speak to a few who were enjoying what they were learning and another few business owners during the meeting asked about the program because they want to get involved next year. So it definitely seems like a very popular addition to the high school programming. Last Saturday, the New Jersey School Board's Legislative Committee met and the list of pending bills and legislation will be put in the board packet, you know, once it's emailed to me. The main topics were that June is going to be a very busy month and then there will pretty much be no activity until after the November election. Pilots were a pretty big discussion point with school boards again saying they were going to start a group to make recommendations to legislatures. One thing that did come up was that the lame duck session from November, December may be a good time to bring something forward. a good time to bring something forward, so school boards has some incentive to work on that topic pretty quickly. Lots of other districts said their townships were hesitant to share pilot funds and asked that the state change its rules to mandate sharing of pilot funds and ensure school boards and/or their districts have a seat at the negotiating table when pilots are contemplated at the township level. And then the other main topic was that the cell phone ban, statewide ban, seems to have lost a little momentum at the state level, something obviously may still happen, but as of last Saturday, it wasn't looking positive. And then I went to the senior awards at PHHS on Monday night, it was really nice, and I was impressed with how many presenters were actually alumni of PHHS, everybody got up and said how long it'd been since they'd been in the auditorium. And we are making progress on the superintendent search, and I thank everyone for their patience and the work that is going on behind the scenes. That is my report. So, we are up to approval of minutes for the regular and executive minutes, one and two of May 22nd, 2025. Can I have a motion please? Mr. DeVito, second, Ms. Chappell, roll call? Mrs. Abraham? Yes. Mr. Barrios?
Yes, on the regular minutes, we queues on the executive minutes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chappell?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
And now we're up to the superintendent's bulletin, number 20, Dr. Sutter?
Thank you, President Kogan, good evening, everyone. I would like to once again thank, to congratulate all the retirees and the 25-year award recipients, as well as Teacher of the Year. For the retirees, I wish you nothing but health and happiness as you transition into this new phase of your life. For the 25-year award recipients, thank you for your continued support, contributions, and most of all, your dedication to our students. Teachers of the Year, your accomplishments are well deserved, speak for themselves. I would like to thank Jenna Spotts and Laura Lorenzo for all they did in their work-based learning program. The appreciation brunch today was wonderful, and I was so happy and proud to see our students actively engaged in the celebration of their efforts. It really makes you feel good watching so many smiling faces, I want to thank everyone that was involved. The annual Red Stock Festival took place on May 31st, Red Stock is home quite a tradition, and I'd like to thank the PHS staff, volunteers, and all the local vendors who volunteered their time, money, and energy to keep the tradition going. Finally, Allison and I attended the Morris County Association of School Administrators' valedictorian, salutatorian, recognition dinner on June 3rd at the Hanover Manor. It was a wonderful evening because I had the pleasure of meeting and speaking with so many wonderful students and parents throughout Morris County. I also had the pleasure of sitting with the Parsippany School District's valedictorians and salutatorians. I was so proud of both our winners and their parents. PHS, PTHSD is truly a great place for students to learn and receive an excellent educational experience. Tonight for your approval, we have superintendent bulletin items 1 through 44 with addendum items 45 through 7.
And, and read it. Are there any questions or comments on the superintendent's bulletin? Now to the secretary's report, Mrs. Tedesco?
Hi, everyone, on tonight's secretary's report, we have our regular business motions, including the approval of the 25, 26 Educational Data Supply Bid Awards. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Is there any new business to come before the board? Mr. Chappell?
Oh, I just want to address the, the board's press release in response to Mayor Barbario's video. Again, this, this opinion is my own, I'm not sure if other board members shared it or not, but just a couple of things about the video and the board's press release. First and foremost, although I haven't been asked directly by anyone here, I had no knowledge of the video, provided no content to the video, wasn't asked about the video, and actually only became aware of the video late afternoon on June 3rd, around 4:30, and I called Allison around 5:00 and said, hey, did you know about this? And she said, yep, I was made aware of it, and she asked if she should call the mayor and discuss it, and I said it'd probably be a good idea. I said to her at the time, I was going to speak to the mayor personally later that evening, and I did, around 6:30 that night, and he was very agreeable to taking the video down, in fact, I think it was already taken down by that point. I did confirm with Allison around 7 o'clock that the, the video was in fact taken down. Interestingly, because I hadn't checked my emails or text messages from about 7:00 until probably after 10:30 that night, but I understand an email went out to the board about 8:48 that evening. However, what's troubling to me is I have it on very good, very credible sources that a senior administrator was contacted by a member of the text, by a member of the press at 7:30, asking what a communication from the board about their press release regarding the video was going to be issued. And I just have to wonder how a member of the press at 7:30, prior to the board receiving the email at 8:48 with the draft press release, was aware that there was a press release forthcoming? It's actually really troubling. Now, that's one issue, and that speaks to professional conduct and trust. The other issue is the board's wisdom in actually issuing a press release. And now that I've presented to the best of my knowledge a timeline of events that transpired on June 3rd, I want to speak directly and candidly about the recent situation involving that video in the press release. As I documented in the timeline, the request was made to remove the video, and that request was granted approximately an hour after it was made, and the video was taken down. At that point in my view, the matter had been resolved appropriately and responsibly. That is why I fundamentally disagree with the decision to draft and send a press release after the fact. When a situation has already been addressed and corrected, issuing a public statement really serves no constructive purpose. It only risks reigniting controversy and bringing your new attention to something that had already been settled, and if you read the online posts, that is exactly where we are. And it actually felt more like posturing than problem solving, and perhaps it was. Even more troubling is the fact that members of the press were aware of a pending press release before any official action was taken. That is unacceptable, and we need to ask ourselves if we deserve an answer. Who informed the press that a press release was being considered? That kind of leap undermines integrity of our processes and damages public trust. We are elected to lead with accountability, transparency, and discretion. That includes protecting the credibility of our internal decision-making processes going forward, and we need to be clear about who is authorized to speak on behalf of this audience, contact the press, and who is not. Thank you.
Thank you, I'd just like to respond to a few things. As of 9:30, the video was still up and viewable, so 9:30 PM, that video was still up and viewed, and it was viewed by thousands of people at that time. So, based on knowing that thousands of people had already viewed it and it was still up at 9:30, that is well before, you know, well after I had already sent out the press release and asked everybody to weigh in on it. And this is a board of nine members, and the majority of the board decided to send that press release out. Would anybody else like to make any comments? Did I miss a different topic?
Uh, I just, June is LGBT Pride Month, and I just want to say happy Pride to all of our queer families and queer students.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. We are up to the hearing of the public. If there was anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in book, in the book at the lectern, and state your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful if you would like to address the board, to please come up now and sign in so that you are ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask that you not provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the municipality in which you live. If you're a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments, and are referred to Law 168 for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings.
Good evening, and thank you for listening. My name is Diana Palmieri, I am a resident of Parsippany, have been my entire life, as my children have gone here, and now my grandchildren are attending the schools. And as much as I respect the fact that all the teachers tonight have done a wonderful job and were entitled to be recognized, the fact that this, we are in such a crunch for money, and while I know it would not even put a dent in it, to see that we spent money on rewards is disappointing to me. Working in corporate America, that would have been the first thing that got cut. That said, my concern is with the budget cut of having substitute teachers at the middle school and the high schools, okay? I have a grandchild in a middle school who today sat in the cafeteria for three periods because there was no substitute. They also did not have anything in their Google classroom to do, okay? Idle time for a middle school child is not good. It is a transition from your elementary into your middle school, and they still don't have that concept of policing themselves. In addition, there were children on the phone. That's not supposed to happen either. So, my question to the board is, are you going to monitor how often children are having to go into the cafeteria, the gym, whatever it is, and not be in a classroom getting instructional training or teaching? And I know this is just starting to be implemented, but can we put metrics in place so that we can see how often this actually happens, so that we know how much the children are impacted? And then in addition, do we have security in place for when they are in that classroom? And you have multiple children going in there now. So, I work in a school district, and I know we have to have the emergency procedures in place in case there's an active person on the grounds that aren't supposed to be there. So, when these kids now are in a different situation than their classrooms, has that all been worked out yet? That is my concern with that part of the budget. My second piece is, what is it that the board needs from the community to pressure our legislators to help increase and give you more money? Because it's obvious that it's needed, but we need guidance from you, but who do I contact? Right now, I'm, my governor is useless, but is that where we go? Do we go at that level? Is it council? Is it your assemblyman? Who is it?
Thank you.
So, I appreciate that, thank you.
Hi, I'm Heidi Bun, also been in Parsippany three generations, my kids are both at Brook Lawn, came back with the same thing. I've taught middle, I teach middle school, two people over here have had their kids. It doesn't work, we've tried it, you're asking for bullying, you're asking for HIBs, you're asking for such a mess. And don't say they don't use phones, my kid has used his screen time up before first period in this district because they're allowed to use it when someone's not there, because I control everything, I know it's my personality. You can't have 30 kids, fine, 90 kids in the same space in middle school and think they're going to behave. You have to have them in smaller spaces. They're not leaving work, you're telling them to sit there, and we know the attendance is a problem. If you don't, and we know teachers are out a lot in this district, in certain schools, you are asking for so many problems that are going to go beyond here. You're looking for lawsuits, you're looking for HIBs, and everything else. I'm sorry, but kids together like that without any structure, and don't say there's structure, there isn't, because we've tried it, we've tried it in cafeteria, we tried in the library, 60 to 90 kids, it was a disaster, and we brought subs back quickly and found people and asked, and paid teachers to do it, on during their, I don't do it because I don't want to do that, but that's what I just did, anyway. So, yes, and then I don't understand where all these other kids are going. Is there an answer to that? Because our schools are at limit, and we're trying to bring another 500, 200 kids in? I mean, I, I, I don't understand, we say we have no money, every district is building new building, you know, Denville's building this, Rockaway's got referendums for this, and this, and this, we are the biggest district around with the most pathetic attendance I've ever seen, and we have no money, I don't understand that, I just, I don't know where we're putting everybody. And it's frustrating because as I said, I graduated from here, I graduated from, I went to Littleton, my parents were both, my dad was the first high graduate, we've been here forever, so we just wish we knew what's going on here, but I can also tell that there's no support, so it's a catch 22. So, thank you.
Thank you. No one else will close the public session, Dr. Sutter?
Yeah. Ms. Anne, what were you speaking about when you said there's 200 additional kids that we're bringing?
We're talking about the kids with the new hard rights.
Right, so there, we have an obligation to educate them because they're coming here, so we cannot say that we can't educate them. So, we're actively trying to figure out why we're building six additional classrooms, we have another Phase 2 coming in, we're using our own money that we had saved, so we're not asking the taxpayers, but at some point, we will need to do a referendum here to actually build schools. So, we will ask, we will ask the, the public for that. Ms. Palmieri, you bring up some good points, I'm certainly going to speak with the administrators there. With regards to security, we do have an SLEO there, and we do have an armed security guard there as well, and we will be going over the security process and practices this summer, and we'll institute it in the fall. Thank you.
Okay. We are now up to the roll call vote for superintendent bulletin number 20, items number 1 through 44 with addendum items 45 through 70 and read-ins. May I have a motion? Mrs. Mayor, and a second, Mr. DeVito, roll call please. Mrs. Abraham? Yes. Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor? Yes. Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
No on 2B and 2C, yes to everything else.
Mr. Chappell?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
All right, there being no further business, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Raya, second, Mr. Chappell, all in favor?
Aye.